A call of the Board of Selectmen to order all rise, face the glass. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make it happen.
We are there.
What happened?
I'm sorry, but you got long. Do you understand what we're saying?
I'd like to call the December ninth Board of Selectmen hating to order. Roll call. Our police judge Georgia Colther is absent. I'm sitting in Mary Smith is pro-ten. Rob Connel.
Here.
Amanda Pooper here. Alex Sessing.
Here.
Dorian Gazinski.
Here.
Rich Baras.
Here.
Agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda? I'd like to just make a note that the minutes are not on here because we received them late. We will deal with the minutes at our next meeting. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, that's roshi. Second.
Second. Motion's been made by Rob Connel and seconded by Dorian Gazinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Reopposed? Audience business. Numbers of the audience have three minutes approved. Number approved. Audience business. Numbers of the audience have three minutes to present any matter of interest not already on the agenda. Letting through the amount but will be not read, but will not be read aloud, but will not be read aloud. Is there anyone on Zoom that needs to rise to the occasion and address the board?
Doesn't help that game.
Thank you. Move on to the payables dated November 23rd through December 31st. Is that how we're rolling on this one?
Yes, so we are going to get the approval for the payables this evening. And then any payables that are presented for the town to pay after tonight will be presented to the board at their next regularly for approval.
For approval or not?
Acceptance.
Potential approval.
We'd like to pay our bills to the unit, but we'll give you a report at your next meeting in January of all the ones we paid from the fourth of January. So we're just what we did last year. So just clarifying, this should be our last IGA invoice, correct? Or is there one more coming in for October and November were zeros, right? For the sheriff's office?
Right. And you recall at your last meeting, you extended through the end of December at the same rate, which is zero. And the board, county board this morning approved the IGA to let it done beyond. So we're going to start into the ramp up period.
So we don't have to sign another extension.
We're done.
Done in five years.
So let's go back to the payables though here because I know you and I had a brief discussion. And Jerry, I might give a weigh in on this.
Sure.
The procedure that we've been following for the payables for longer than Dirk since I've been here is a little bit different than what we're proposing to do tonight. And I realize that our next board meeting is scheduled right before the holiday. And in the past, what we have done is scheduled a quick meeting to approve the payables so that closer to the end of the year. So now we're giving the blanket opportunity for those invoices to be paid without the board having the opportunity to review them. Which does goes against the flow a bit.
I can comment on that. Obviously, you have the practice of approving payables, but there is no requirement in law that payables come to the elected board so long as the bills that the town gets and pays are within the budget and the appropriation. And it's typical, honestly, in larger communities to never have payables to be approved by city council because that's why you have your budget. That's why you have your appropriations. Understanding that many small municipalities, including Georgetown, have a practice of bringing payables to the board and the board probing on them. But you know, when you think about it, that's sort of a second appropriation almost. And I'm not suggesting the board should change their practice and abandon that. But at the end of the year, you do have tenders that do need to be paid and should be paid finally. And for sort of the remaining bills at the end of the year, perfectly appropriate workarounds, not really a workaround, is to approve the bills all the way through to the end of the year, including those that are received with the condition that they be within budgeted amounts firstly. And secondly, that the board be provided with those payables for with those paid bills for any questions at the first meeting and chat room.
So perhaps shortly after the first of the year, the board should have a conversation and discuss whether or not we want to continue the practice of going through the payables on a regular basis. If in fact, it's rather moot.
I think so, obviously. And it's, it's the, the, sometimes there's value because board members ask about, well, what, you know, what was this item or that item? And it's part of you, you asked about it, but that money's been budgeted for those purposes. And that's why you have an administrative staff is to spend the money that you have approved for appropriate things.
So the document could be provided to us just as informational purposes and a question could be raised, but the approval is rather.
It's not redundant. It's, in fact, that's actually a practice that I've seen. Hi, this is, these are the bills we pay. Any questions?
Okay.
And you know, that doesn't slow down their being paid, but it does, does give board members the opportunity to see that they were and see what they were paying, you know, for. That's a flip or grid.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to belabor at this point. Let's move on and approve the payables as we have done for so many years because we like to keep traditions going on. But let's, let's come back and visit that process in the future. So does anyone have any questions on the payables that besides the whole procedural?
I just wanted to make sure. So I bumped into Junior at the Safeway. Is that 24,000 from the lease?
Yeah. That's the straps, correct?
That's Mark.
The parking lot.
But I know that's from, yes, it is. It'll be two paid, it'll be two bills.
Those are on there as well.
We'll give this one.
Maybe the lease, they'll even get paid by then.
Well, it's.
That was all budget.
God, right there.
Water, propane leaks are not.
Oh, they're bothering me. I was thinking of that.
I mean, they're budgeted in the grant scheme.
Yes, I was thinking of the.
Drop for her.
In the line of places that point the last of those.
Right.
That's what my side of it was. But this was all Strauss Park, the 24,000 that was on. Yes. Any other questions on the payables? I just had one quick one. The $4,939 to sell an entire mark. Please tell me that we replaced every tire in Rowan Bridge and beyond. Or we have some big tires.
It's an equipment. It was a piece of equipment on the track of the, so.
So it's not R and B tires. It's not, it wasn't tires. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's a big car.
Do I have a motion to approve the payables from 11/23 to December 31st, 2025 and beyond? Do I have a motion to approve the payables from eleven twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and beyond?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Action items. Continuation of public hearing on adoption of the twenty twenty-six proposed budget.
Proper open hearing at a given time for the record.
We never closed it, though, right?
Correct.
So we continued it. So just for the record on the minute, I'd say we're, we're
We're continuing and are reopening the public hearing at six-ten P M on the proposed twenty twenty-six budget that you have in front of you with copies of the updated C I P, right?
I confirm there are any public justifies that there's no one online.
Do we have anyone Zooming or anything else?
Probably declared a budget near a close. How did we find?
How about six-eleven, just in case? Or we have to sit here and wait a few more minutes or a few more seconds? Okay, the public hearing is closed also at six-ten P M. Having no one with any questions, discussion from the board. And perhaps our town administrator would like to hit some highlights.
Okay. I have created before you a proposed budget and plan so you can see what we're talking about on the major items, which we have talked about, I think, over six work sessions. Under revenue, the staff applied a two percent revenue growth rate across the board. And we're also proposing no change in utility rates for water and sewer. Under operations, constant living wage increases included in the budget is a two-point-seven-five percent. Additionally, there has been a miracle created of three percent. That would be at the discretion of the town administrator. Additional F T E was approved or presented in the Parks Department and approved by the Parks Commission. Funding for the law enforcement I G A, which was finalized this morning, of six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars has been included. Also in the police budget are just a few dollars of miscellaneous that might come up that are outside that contract. Special event funding in the B P C budget for Christmas market, fourth of July and tree lighting. Christmas market was the, the fireworks. The new gateway sign design that was, is being worked on by the P P C is also included in their budget. Both costs for design and for the beginning of construction. We also have contributions to the Georgetown Trust, the County Housing Authority and Childcare Services, thirty thousand dollars. And then also rounding that out, it is money that was already allocated by the board for Argentine, Argentine North Tree Plantings. Under our capital projects, I will read through these. It's significant totaling over three million dollars of proposed capital projects. These include the town hallway location, the hotel, if re-parking lots movement, the old Missouri restoration, the hook and ladder restoration, the roundabout safety project, must've liked Flatiron, Bluebird, Alliance, Greenwich issues, Biddle Street grave restoration, Upper Loop Drive repaving project, purchase of a new street sweeper, park signage installations throughout the community's parks, building a skate park, also building a pizza park, Wordline Park renovation and Greenway Park improvements. Water system pressurization project, and that comes directly from the Haley Aldrich report that you received at your last meeting. Water plant intake upgrades that we anticipate will have to be required when Excel Energy decommissioned with Four Bay Dam. N T U meters, chlorine analyzer replacement, watering disconnections, lower replacements, sewer main replacements, and vehicle replacements across the four public works entities. That's the highlights. The issues, the actions that are being asked to do this evening are exactly as they were last year. We have the first resolution, number twelve, will be the boards adopting a budget for the town of Georgetown, which you have updated and included in your package. Resolution number thirteen will be the appropriation of the sums of money to the various funds. This is required by law. And then the third resolution will be certification of the valuation and also establishing the mill levy of nine-point-three-six mils, which is unchanged from the current budget year. I can answer any specific questions you might have. Mary Howard asked me about Lorraine, her accounting contract. That is going to continue into next year. And we anticipate that she is going to continue to provide big rec support. We also talked to you about her being assigned an audit role in S D Rs. And also when we go out to bid for the auditing firm for next year, we're going to ask for assistance in going through those auditors and vetting that process.
Does anyone have any questions about anything in the budget?
So we're going to be able to do all these capital projects. Yes.
So an offshoot question with the water system pressurization and the Haley Aldrich presentation that we've had last week. And Jerry, this pertains a little bit to you. Part of that was we were going to just, and I know this is outside of the budget, but we were going to discuss the fee schedule and how that was going to be impacted. And we have this standing moratorium on building. So are we going to be prepared in one of our first meetings in January to tackle that so we can?
Yes, ma'am. Haley Aldrich is putting the fine tuning, is fine tuning their recommendation on what development fees will change to. And then we hope to present those for adoption. And then that will open the gateway to beginning of development again.
Well, there are moratorium only a hundred eighty.
It was, the moratorium was through the end of November.
Yeah.
But we have not taken action to lift that moratorium.
So it didn't just happen, I believe.
Not, didn't say that in the
So we don't need to do that?
And we don't have any pending right now, anyway.
Nothing else from anyone? Okay, so in your packet under item two A, I believe, we have a resolution that needs a motion? Or to, or not to be?
It's two A though, right?
Yeah.
And it says resolution number fourteen. Resolution number twelve.
Oh, actually, that's not quite spelled out. Well, it is on the agenda, but on two A in the packet, it's
The one on the packet is the right number.
Should be resolution number fourteen?
Yes.
So then that's going to affect us on the next resolution also as far as numbering. Is that correct? We'll take that one when we get there. Okay, so
Well, I'll do a free resolution number fourteen, series two thousand twenty-five. Second.
So there's a resolution of the board of selectmen for the town of Georgetown, Colorado, summarizing the expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the town of Georgetown, Colorado for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-six and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-six. We have motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You go. So on to two B.
This is resolution number fifteen. It is accomplishing a very similar action as the resolution fourteen. It is laying out the funding allocations for each fund. These numbers come from the budget in summary. And you can see those under budget for two thousand twenty-six on the resolution. The general fund, government fund, you want me to review all these for the record? Or?
Sure.
Okay.
Six million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, ninety-five cents for the general fund. The fire station maintenance fund, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. No money being appropriated for expenses for the storage structure preservation fund. The conservation trust fund, three thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Town promotion fund, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents. The workforce and tourism enhancement fund, eighty-two thousand. Foster's place fund, eight thousand. That is what is remaining in what has we anticipate being spent this year. The sales tax capital improvement fund, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. The water fund, two million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. The sewer fund, one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and five cents. The agency fund, C dot, which is just a pass through, we received the monies from C dot. We passed those through to the visitor center. Ninety-four thousand dollars for a total twenty-two, twenty-six expenditure proposal of eleven million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety cents.
May I, did you mention that there was some small thing on this resolution that needed to be corrected?
It's fine, yeah.
Okay.
There was on the one that got emailed earlier.
Okay, thank you.
There was an announcement. And the one that the second one came out, this one's fine.
Oh, thank you. Any questions besides, well, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is. We're just
Hey, guys. Remember, we have to be responsible as we spend these funds.
Yep.
That's why I'd like to make a recommendation.
A motion.
A recommendation of a motion. I move to approve resolution number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the bounds and for the purposes as set forth and authorized the police judge assign on behalf of the town of Georgetown. Sorry.
The motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item number C, resolution number sixteen?
Yes, ma'am.
What am I missing?
Resolution number sixteen.
I was just waiting for a minute.
Okay, as we all are.
It's just hot here.
I think, you know, you're a new guy.
I know, it's all good projects.
You better be on the hot seat.
A lot of good projects.
Yeah, a lot of good stuff.
The town.
If you're nervous or worried about, look, I want you to understand one thing. The budget is a blueprint. Everything that we're going to spend in the budget, you have to approve anyway, right?
Exactly.
And if we decide that we don't want to do something, we can amend the budget. As Kaja wisely said to me today, it's a living document that's going to help guide all of the great wonderful things we're going to do in twenty twenty-six. Okay, resolution sixteen. This is the board's action to certify the evaluation that was sent to us by the county assessor. You have that document in your pocket this evening. It looks like a question. So the assessor has given us their assessment for property in Georgetown. And you can see it has grown from thirty millions, there, I gotta put a fast time, thirty million, seven seventy-six, five ten in the current year. And they are setting the valuation at thirty-six million, seven fifteen, one dollars for twenty twenty-six. And that's what we use to develop our property taxes, our revenue. And we are asking that you establish with this action the same mill levy as the current year, nine-point-three-six mils.
Right, so just so there's an understanding, there's no increase in the actual mill. It's just an increase in the actual
Value, yes.
So it's the same as last year.
All right, I'll take it. I move to approve resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, certifying the twenty twenty-six town mill levy of nine-point-three-six mils and improving a recertification evaluation in the county assessor. The total taxable assessed valuation of thirty-six million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand and twenty dollars, no sense.
I'll now second it.
Is the motion on the floor with a second? Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hey, pass the money here. Well, not really. Item number three, consideration of a lease for a Parks Department truck for a lease payment of nine hundred and seventy-three dollars per month for a period of forty-eight months. It's also in your packet.
So we were fortunate that the county has gone first on converting over to a fleet leasing program. And they did all of the vetting of leasing companies and they selected unified fleet services. So we are piggybacking on that process that they went through to vet these providers. And we have contacted Unified Fleet Services. They are offering us the same program that they offer the county. And in a nutshell, we tell them the vehicles we would like. They go out and find those. They offer, they purchase them and then they lease them to us. So you'll see, they've given us a number of options because we are exploring options on different vehicles. What we're asking for approval this evening is the single parts vehicle because they have been going without the last couple of months. And it's important that we get moving on this. If you look on page three, that vehicle is a two thousand twenty-six Ford F-two-fifty X L T, four-wheel drive. And we are looking at the four-year term. The option there for the gas vehicle is a forty-eight payment term for nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And you'll see that at the end of the lease, twenty-five thousand, seven fifty will be still owed on the, on the vehicle. But the market value is anticipated to be thirty-one, five ninety-nine. That's the residual. So if this is actually what comes to fruition, the town will have the option of trading that in. And the difference between the market value and the over value can be applied for trading value for a new vehicle. So we're asking for your approval of option one, for us to lease a parts vehicle, F-two-fifty for forty-eight months at nine hundred and seventy-three dollars per month.
When do we anticipate getting this vehicle?
That is a shot in the dark. Ever since COVID, ordering vehicles has been a touchy subject, so it's always best to get your order in quick. I've experienced where they've been backed up for two years, but I've had some that have come in within six months. So we're hoping to have this in the next three to six months.
I have a question. It said, interest rates and pricing assume a minimum of three hundred thousand in financed vehicles and equipment. It's on page three, number one. And does that mean you definitely need to lease a couple of more vehicles to hit that number, get that pricing?
No, they have waived that for our single purchase of the parks. But if the town moves forward with the anticipated leasing of the other vehicles, then we'll hit that three hundred thousand.
I mean, we're not for any questions.
I know, it's probably moved, but I was trying to see if there, like, mileage situation? I mean, I know it's not like it's going to go over like thirty, it's not gonna, it's not like it's gonna go over like thirty thousand miles, let's be real, but is there a mileage cap?
I thought it was in here, but it was fifteen thousand per year.
I, I might have missed it. I don't have my glasses. I looked at home, so I'm like, gee, this is fine.
I don't see that in here, but it is fifteen thousand miles per year.
And how are we not, but that seems reasonable, right? It's not like it's
Very generous, very That's a, that's a pretty generous amount of rounds.
I just put a lot of miles on my car because I only have one.
This town's only so big.
You don't go around in circles
I don't.
in parks, guys.
All right, circle.
I'm not saying that
They were going around in circles on Saturday.
Almost they were. Pretty damn clear.
I know that these, um, these are, this is something we talked about a long time ago. And these are, I'm really glad that we're moving into something that is a little more sensible for the amount of wear and tear that we put on our vehicles. I think these are really good progress person. So I think it's awesome.
So next year, we're going to have two employees on our parks. Do we have access to another vehicle for the second staff member when they're not doubling up on St. Carter?
Yes. So if you remember in the budget, we're going to be swapping a Roman bridge truck, a water truck, a sewer truck. And when we have those trucks in hand, then we're going to assess what existing vehicles we have and whether we want to auction those or reassign that to the Parks Department. Or one of the things that the guys and I have talked about is having one floating truck. So if one department has a truck in for maintenance, there has, there's a vehicle. And that would have been really nice to have this last month because we've had two vehicles down in Denver being repaired. And then when the axle blew out on the Parks truck when we were doing the rodeo down here at the events thing, that left them without a truck. And so they had to borrow a Roman bridge truck in the meantime. And everybody's been really good about loading their trucks, right, Hugh?
Oh, isn't it? Yeah.
Hmm, there's another story on that.
There's lots of close stories.
So. Any more discussion on this one? There's a motion in your packet?
I move to approve the lease with Unified Fleet Services for nine hundred and seventy three dollars per month, the replacement of the Parks pickup truck.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded, any more discussing? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Okay, um, the First Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement for the Prop One, Two, Three Affordable Housing.
What about number four, the recommendation we canceled on the twenty third?
Oh, sorry. Yes, we're recommending that the Board cancel the meeting for the twenty third because of its um, closeness to the holiday, and also because we don't anticipate to have much for the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. That consideration, cancellation of.
Cancellation of the December twenty third.
I would, yeah, I'd move to.
That's okay, just clarify.
Consideration of, or, or, well, the recommendation to cancel the December twenty third, the regular meeting of the Board's side.
Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Just saying here, guys, if something happens, and we gotta pull this together, which we're now in the end of the year. We can always do a quick Zoom meeting, we've done that in the past, if necessary.
Sure.
Okay, okay, alright.
We have Christmas in Tegu, and I think we. West.
Are you going to Tegu?
No, I'm kidding, I'll be regular.
There's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, all in favor to cancel the meeting. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Close, just to.
So we can all say Happy New Year, as we leave this only. Hey, now, number five, consideration and amendment for Prop One Twenty Three.
Okay, you'll remember that as part of that, uh, deal with Lakeview Flats and the Affordable Housing Project, there was a purchase and sale agreement. And we actually talked about the deadline, remember, coming up. Well, Kurt and Max left, Jerry and I know that the state has not approved anything yet, and they're moving very slowly. And so they have requested that we enter into an extension here till January thirtieth. It's a very simple action, but it requires us to, and Jerry is spending time writing this amendment. So, if you have any questions about the amendment language itself, I know Jerry would love to get into those questions for him.
Exactly, was Jan, is it January thirty first or thirty? Is that gonna be long enough?
Well, we don't think so, we hope so, if not, we can bring another one to you for a second meeting in January. That will be decided.
Just in the language, the first paragraph of the agreement, maybe I'm reading this wrong. I was doing my speed reading this afternoon. On the second line, it says it's entered into this blank date of December twenty twenty five, I realized we're gonna fill in today, by in between, by in between. Can we just do by in between ones, please? Unless we're betweening or wrong, something more.
By in between, one of those tricks they always.
I know, I know, I thought it was one of those, you know, double mirrors or something. You do this just to test me, I know this, Jerry.
Yeah, read out again, I just.
I know. And so.
You know, he whispered to me.
I know, I know, he does this, and so I can say, yes, I did. Okay, so we're just changing the date, nothing else.
That's correct.
Okay, there's a motion in your packet?
I move to authorize and direct the Police Judge to have some keep the First Amendment to Purchase and Sale Agreement connection for the Lakeview Frost Flats project raise to inform approved by Town Executive Urban Times. So let's say in October, or, it sounded weird the way I said it.
Oh, English tremor, yeah. I'll second that, since the English could be.
Been moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, come on, guys, we are almost.
This is Kaja's.
Yes, okay, so I believe I've mentioned to you in a staff report from a couple of months back that the Department of Housing, uh, made sure to inform me that we, if we pass this resolution, we get fifty thousand dollars for local planning capacity grants. Um, this resolution doesn't really change anything, and what it is, is a a resolution to establish an expedited review process for affordable housing, it's part of the Prop One Twenty Three Initiative. And we already meet the standards for that, our review does not take ninety days for any of our projects, I mean, it does if things are missing, but, you know, this is assuming a complete application, um, and then everything is correct, ninety days. So we already meet the qualifications the state has established. This resolution is stating that we uh, already need it, and that we intend to continue with the expedited review. So an easy win for us for a thousand dollars.
This is kind of a guarantee slam dunk, if we pass this resolution, if we pass go, we get fifty thousand dollars.
We are, we need.
You have the answer to the question.
Wow, and, uh, you know, it's for local planning specifically, so we did, you know, we were thinking about this when we're talking about our planning commission working on the
Conference.
Conference of plan, thank you. And, you know, the designer review commission also has some updates they'd like to do, so that's where we tend to put that money towards, uh, but it is a, we get fifty thousand dollars when we pass this resolution.
Okay, so does our current moratorium have any preference?
No, because it's more concerned on the issue of developing permits but not on finding activities.
Okay.
The town would undertake.
I move to approve Resolution Number Seventeen, Series Twenty Twenty Five, to confirm and commit for an expedited review process for all affordable housing developments.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, any more discussion, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did we have the right number on that one? Is that seventeen? Yeah, it is, okay. Okay. Police Judge and Board of Selectmen, who wants to go first? Let's do something different. Dwayne, how about you?
Sure, we, we had another housing meeting, um, a week ago Monday, we made, um, Janine Marielli, um, is our new chair. Um, what else can we have? Um.
How's the search going for your ED?
We're actually more on search, or, um, filling a few spots for a bit out.
We have two at large positions.
Yes.
For the Board itself, so anyone who's interested in applying for an at large position for the Housing Board, you should submit an application to us, just a lot of intent. And I know that, I think we also scheduled one more special one from out, right?
Yep, and it is on seventeen.
And is that an at large position countywide regardless of municipal boundaries?
Yeah, anyone who lives in the county and is eighteen or older is eligible.
Okay, do we have something like that on the website? Encouraging people to apply?
You should post something like that for us.
Yeah, because we, we had a posting, and it kind of ran out, and we extended it, and we really didn't get much input from anybody, so I don't think word really got out. But we could definitely use a couple of positions.
We need to change something, do not bring something out.
Well, one of them was, if they were, um, they had a voter ID card that showed that they live in the county, but then we figured that wasn't right, we couldn't do that. So there was something.
But they do have to be a resident of the county.
Definitely have to be.
Or they can prevent whichever.
Is it, is it like, what's under the county, like they just live here, okay, or is it?
There is no, they really haven't been watching.
The primary resident part of, uh, legal definition, it would be distorted so fairly, so.
Okay, thanks, anything else?
That's about it.
Dwayne, Dwayne, you're our Dwayne. Alex, let's go to you.
I have nothing to do with that.
Well, you should. Step it up, sir, twenty twenty six, that's the goal, okay? Richard.
Um, fire authority doesn't meet until next week, then I'll be in Florida.
Then you won't be there.
No, but I'll talk to you.
We're gonna go to fires and.
Anything on the horizon that we should know about?
Um, I think they're looking at moves and positions around and that sort of thing, but I think they'll be more on that after they proceed.
Rob.
Really, it was a success.
It was excellent.
We had a great time, we had a great time, and, uh.
Did you synchronize your watches?
Oh, no, we, uh, we all went, uh, by a certain, uh, phrase in, uh, O Christmas Tree. And once that passed, uh, probably by two stanzas, we finally. It was clockwork, stream precision, and, um, right off target.
One of the greatest things about Georgetown tree lighting is nobody knows exactly where the tree's gonna come on.
It's, it's a big.
Obviously, just have us.
And, and, and in the section of Rose and and Sixth Street, you know, people are, oh, I think it's this, oh, you, I think it's this, it's going to be this, but.
That is the largest attendance that I've ever seen, I've missed it last couple of years, so it may have.
No, not very good.
But I, I do think that that was the, the biggest group that we've seen.
Hopefully, you know, I mean, it's always been a locals thing, but I think a lot of relatives.
Sure.
They'll let go of it, so.
There were some people that I didn't recognize.
There was some folks from outside of town that are coming in and seeing this, you know, this display.
Oh, Walmart's probably good. Every moment, there's tons of Walmart.
I'm laughing about that.
They did their own parade.
Anything else from Parks that you'd like to share with us?
See, no, we're considering signage, I, I'm really excited about the signage, I don't know if you guys have seen the renditions, but they, they look really good, and I think we got Mike Huggins to thank for that, cuz I think he was the one that pretty much conceded it all.
He definitely came up with the business promotion archway, and then I don't know if it's credit Dennis or Christian.
Christian Wobon came to.
Oh, did, was Christian as well?
Yeah.
Wanted to, like, work off of that.
That's right, you're right.
So, I give my credit as the generator of the idea, that Christian really brought it to Parks.
Nice, right.
Some kind of cohesive look, you know?
Well, it's, it's.
Magic net.
It really looks good, I don't know, I, I made the, uh, the suggestion that they, they, they have laser cut the signs to make them, um, wooden. Wind friendly? Is that the right term?
There is nothing that's winds friendly.
We think it has weeds, you know.
And, just, I was gonna say, if the wind is as sort of, it plays a song or something like that. I mean, the, the bridge that goes over, I'm getting off, that's, that's, I'm almost.
Okay, moving along, Miss Cooper.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, I am cold and I hate brown worst. I'm still cold. But, uh, no, we know, seriously, it was obviously a, uh, not the opening market that we all hoped for, thanks to Mother Nature. But I wanted to say Town Staff did an incredible job.
Yes, they did.
Uh, keeping things moving in town, town looks so good. For us, I haven't seen town look as well put together as it does at the moment in, you know, been a while. So, huge kudos to Town Staff.
Yeah.
They look, the decorations are amazing, and the Christmas market was, was great, um, outside of the fact that it was obviously so down.
Tree lighting was a big success to Town Staff, so, yeah.
In the town, in the town, yeah, the town was, I mean, the town, we were, we were a little, um, it was like, you know, eighteen hundreds, we had no power, so that's okay. But we all got through it.
With candles.
Um, yeah, so, I did literally have candles, I'd stir them. So, I mean, it was a good market weekend, um, hopefully we're in a better market weekend, none of the, uh, my site commissions that I have to go to that met, so, um. Happy twenty twenty six.
Nothing on economic resilience to you, or, you know. So if I run over there and be the Board Three, we can see that. Um, what could I say, um, our first meeting, we had a full, at BPC this month, we had, um, had three new members that we appointed at our last meeting, so thank you very much, we actually were able to conduct business. We have three very enthusiastic commission members, very involved, one of them even volunteered for, uh, you know, stints at Christmas Market, they're very excited. And it's nice to have fresh perspective, I say that now. Looking forward to the new year. And so now back to the Police Judge, um, I haven't heard anything specifically that she wanted me to bring up to you all, so we can move on to the Town Attorney Report.
Uh, except for, you know, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, see you in the new year.
Sir.
Steph, Tom Kirk.
Um, we're starting to see a lot of fins, like, because, um, it's a bit of a different fix. Working on updating the warrant applications for the new year. And we've got a couple of these short term rentals that I've been applying to for permits, um, none, neither, which are their full residences. So they're able to get around some density limitations. Uh, and other thing that's been keeping me busy has been getting ready for ice tar, I think, that we have a project been taking over this year, so we've got schedule finalized, so all, we reached out to everyone to give an update for what to expect this year. Um, next step will be collecting payments, um, to be final. And then, uh, something that's a larger project that Dennis is helping me work on is drafting SOPs for some of our standard administrative procedures, so. Is.
I think it's funny that the, and it's root for people, that you're, you're the softest spoken person in charge of those. I, I just want, I wish I was a lot more.
No, listen.
Can you go back to the S T R thing, man, I, I didn't hear what you said, that there, there was.
We have.
Some of the application, or the applicants, they're not full time residents, and so what was?
They're not renting out their full residence.
Oh, okay.
Which allows them to get around the density limitations, they still have to pay lodging taxes and pay the regular fees and do the application process, but they're not um, they're not should be here to all the dense peoples.
So they have more of the original Airbnb where they're renting a room or part of their house, but they're occupying the other part of the house.
Correct, both of them in this case, like, we have, like, mother in law.
A D U's.
A D U's.
Full works.
Yes.
Uh, one.
That's yours.
Which does not have space, so even if they were renting out their full.
You ever see Nick Saban at that Airbnb commercial? Yes, it was a great barbecue I had back, you can't use it.
They don't have something able to post our S T R somewhere, um.
I made the decision.
Or how are we? Are we carried out with business licenses, like, how, how can we?
I have a log of all the addresses, but I, when I was updating paperwork, I have a release of address permission that I've added to the form, cuz I was uncomfortable releasing the addresses of all the Airbnbs, because not even Airbnb does that. You have to reserve it before you can get the address. So I wanted to get a release for this year, and then I'll be able to publish the locations of the Airbnbs in town. Um, they're available by request, and I do have a log of all the addresses where I can check things. But I wasn't comfortable putting them on the website without getting permission from owners.
But they do have a business, they do get a business license, correct?
Correct.
So as a business license holder, as any other business license holder, there's.
There's also a permission on that to be listed on the website or act.
What do you do here? Yeah, not gonna belabor it. Who's up next, Town Treasurer, Hugh?
All the audit investigators, I mean, they sent us a draft of it, we're waiting for to sign. Page, um.
From them to sign off on, you mean? Okay.
Uh, we're doing on, we're doing on our P for auditors, send out to, that's the rain, so that helps us go through. Talk to Comcast. Oh, to confirm, we have canceled the internet at the whole police station, waiting to get some or find the P E equipment from police station to send back to prepare a plan of it.
I, I know that you shared the audit report with us once it's signed off on, but is there anything that jumps out that we should be aware of at this moment in time?
I haven't taken time to read through it yet.
All your spare time is.
We will, my book alter, we'll find you come.
Okay, when do we anticipate having it signed off on and having a copy of it?
Probably in the next couple of weeks.
The next year.
Maybe. Lorraine has to look at it too, Hugh has to look at it, Asia has to look at it, I'll tell her to get it.
So we don't, we don't meet until next year anyway, so I'm using that to your advantage, sir.
Well, so, I don't think that it's a matter of the staff giving it to you, I think that there are laws in place that auditors are required to send it directly to elected officials, so if they get it done, and we sign off and our management letter is complete, and everything's done, they're gonna send it to you directly, I think. So, there's a chance you could get it before the end of the year, but with that said, considering how it's gone so far. Maybe by my birthday.
And I'm not sure we've ever gotten anything direct from the auditors before, I think it's been a past. And I'm not sure we've ever gotten anything direct from the auditors before, I think it's been a pass through, but I'm not saying that that necessarily was the correct procedure either, so um.
True.
Just just confirming so that we know at some point and hopefully the not suits. Our future, we'll be seeing it. Anything else, Q?
Uh, you have a role up toward the over set us next. Then breakdowns.
Do we have an offer to November?
We have what?
Do we have an estimate from November?
Because it's not due till February the fifth month, so.
We were just talking about November's number from last year and that seems kind of low to what we are experiencing, so we won't be surprised if we're significantly higher than that one oh nine, nine oh six. All in all, we're doing very well, considering.
Hey, guys, I just don't know if it's a big deal or not, but I just found the last meeting's minutes, we don't have that really good on the agenda, and do you just wanna push it off for the humanists?
We didn't, yeah.
We got a leak.
Oh.
So we didn't get to reading yet.
Yeah, wish you not.
So we're way ahead of you, we already pushed it. We pushed it out, you're on.
Uh, it's not too public.
That's right. You're on to me, thank you.
You're silly, handsome. You need a break, Joe. I think I don't know, you gotta do it for my family, but I told you I.
Next, no, this. So since this is our last meeting and and the next time we meet, January twenty twenty six, obviously, we're in a new year. Can I request on behalf of the entire board that we get quarterly um summaries of our budget on a timely basis?
A true year to date?
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you.
I think we talked about that before.
Well, we're trying to wrap this up with a neat little bow for the end of the year for next.
Always want to.
Like it. Your business town administrators report, you're up.
Alright, we should all have a copy in front of you, um, the main thing I wanted to call out is we are hosting a Christmas party next Tuesday. Jerry, I don't know, we sent you the email, but you're invited. Uh, and all of the commissions are invited, all of the boards are invited, your families are invited. We're not doing a potluck this year. We have very low turnout historically, and so we are hoping for a little bit more participation. We're having this at the Clear Creek Inn. Um, and you know, if more people show up than we're expecting, just remember, we didn't have our Christmas party last year, so um, it'll be fun. I think it'll be really good. Uh, please come, please come celebrate all the accomplishments that we've had this year and last year. You guys all certainly put your hours in last year. We should have got a Christmas party last year, so um, yeah, I I think it'll be really fun.
Sorry, I missed the date.
Next Tuesday, I think five thirty at the Clear Creek Inn. And, uh, you know, they're gonna have salad and pizza and wings, just kind of kind of off around a bit. I think we would, and please.
You guys probably aren't invited, but since all the commissions and boards are there, do just have to be hosted.
We are.
Okay, good.
We have.
Already thought. I'm like, great, okay.
Justin.
Justin case, absolutely.
Remind.
Justin case, we decide to vote.
All right.
I want something really important.
If we all start laughing and say, yeah, all of a sudden, God knows what we've approved, is that what you mean?
Nick said, he's like, do I get to come with you? I'm like, you're on a commission, you get to go all by yourself, and he was like, oh.
He doesn't need you. And and I was told, yeah, so you said we could bring our kids, so.
Yeah, you, you.
Okay, good luck.
We've we've always invited all the board and commissions and their family.
Yeah.
Um, I think the potluck aspect of it deterred a lot of people, so.
We're not.
Or. There will be.
Food there.
So we don't.
Don't bring food. I mean, if you wanna bring food, I don't, I think Stanley, I'm really, I'm sure, okay, but, you know. Um, and we're not paying for any alcohol and beverages, you have to buy that yourself.
There's a cash bar.
Yes, but there will be a ton of alcoholic beverages, but yeah, so.
And we've already re-approved whatever, you know, you eat, so manja, manja.
They need to host in that.
Yeah.
Oh, really fun, yeah.
It leads past the word and birds people because I was dumbfounded when Kasia was telling me that it should that people don't show up and come to this, and I consider this probably the most important team building for everybody that volunteers and the big thank you for putting the time and including yourselves, and I think it's important that people show up to be part of this, show to be part of the team.
I'll be in South Dakota.
That's where Tahiti.
Yeah, well, South Dakota, Tahiti.
The Tahiti of the of the.
It's a little different.
Zoom in, I was, I was like, if you're a trap, lady, rapid titty.
Well, Susan be.
Have a lot of family.
Uh, I'm on southern, yeah.
She was.
Well, she's.
If I ask.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like.
Thank you so much.
Florida, that's true. In shorts and we T-shirt.
You mentioned that, it's like.
I'm a star.
Rubbing it in, it's gonna go in the minutes. Where will you be next, Tuesday? Are you coming to party, Alex? I haven't decided yet, okay.
I will be supporting.
I will.
Partnering all.
I will not delay a meeting on January thirteenth.
I'm gonna.
There it was.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Oh, no, hi, Slime, come here.
No, Aspen.
Oh, still fun, still good.
Still fun, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Tom, next to your report.
Only two things, I wanted to bring you up to date on our um, efforts to fill up vacant positions. We've landed on a candidate for the vacant position in Rotten Bridge. And we hope that that person will be starting very soon, maybe next week. The second position is the vacant position in the utility. Kasia has the job posting finalized and she's gonna be doing that, so we hope to start interviews before the end of the year for that position. That's it.
Quick comment on Room Rich, it was pretty upcoming weekend. I know that it was obviously a very, very rusher as we downed the floor, everybody out there. Is there anything that we have in our power for the number of residents we're expecting this weekend to maybe make the descent from the south to the north less deadly, because I think I mean like a dozen town residents, myself included, that ate it on that hill.
And severe falls.
Like I legitimately actually like hit my head and I, people who are around me said I seemed confused.
It was school though.
Yeah, the school.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm worried about, like, I mean, I'm I'm mountain stock, so I just shake my head really hard when my confessions go away, but I don't. No, I was going back because an older resident had fallen.
Yeah.
And I went back to help her, and then I almost killed myself, and apparently, I know that I've heard like horror stories of literally probably like no exaggeration, but just people that fell.
There's.
Or.
Absolutely.
So I'm just worried about people like tourists, this way.
Saturday, Saturday was rough, let's let me let me jump in here and then you can you can explain your own town staff. Saturday was rough, obviously, because of the snow, and I don't think we could expect anything more from what I saw our Rotten Bridge guys doing in that case. But that's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons, though, that why we need to close that road off.
Yeah.
Because of the pedestrian traffic and because of the the safety issues.
We also.
So I think that would have led the point home, what we saw this weekend.
When we were driving back and forth on the four-wheeler of the hill, cars kept, and I know people were trying to get closer to the market to like drop off people in cars. But we saw two vehicles that slid down the hill and hit the barricade at the bottom, Aspen. Cause they got through it and then they couldn't stop and they they went through the barricade.
Because no, John, they weren't supposed to be on.
They weren't supposed to be on in the first place. Um, but like people had to like run out of the way near the tent at one point, like, cause the cars sucked.
That's okay, our Jeep was blocking the tent, the tent was fine.
Yeah. Thank you. No, it was people that were on the street, like near the tent, but like, yeah. So, yeah, just to go ahead and address your.
I was just gonna add that, um, in addition to that, we had someone calling about the sidewalks in front of uh, Granola Pass Brewery and the Silver Brick, because.
There's no business.
Right, so we sent staff out to salt and take care of that. So part part of the problem is not knowing, but if we get to, you know, Sunday afternoon and we're trying to do propane and and generate.
Christmas market, it was horrible start of the day. It was rough, it was so rough.
Yeah, never, yeah. We were all.
Town staff was amazing at how responsive they were.
Hundred percent.
To be able to keep things going.
Hundred percent.
So.
I just, as a cap, I I think everybody that went down was local. That I knew of, I'm sure tourists had go down, so it's like the locals, all, we all kind of know better, and it's like, well, that was stupid on us for not having our tracks on.
I'll be here this weekend, so I don't think she knows.
Technically refused. You're ready to catch the weather.
But I just worried like it's yours, doesn't, and then tries to suit.
All over.
It was interesting, Ward three, our room was closed off because two ladies were driving three horses in a duly outfit with no, no tires, no chains. And so they came up the little hill, across the bridge and slid back, they had to be pulled out and two of my neighbors and I had to, we found some chains, Mike had some.
Yeah.
And got them chained up and and out of it, but like PJ was walking their horses and.
Oh, wow.
Viewers down here.
Yeah.
We had a horse traffic jam in Georgetown, that's.
Did hear about that, I was like, what?
You know, what?
But I have to say.
Unprepared.
Attendance wise, all things considered, a lot of people still made the trip up, we got great media coverage.
Yep.
Um, and I do think that the other thing that hurt us was how well the Broncos are doing, because at two o'clock on Sunday, the market turned to.
Yeah, we.
And so we'll have that.
And we're gonna have a big party on Sunday.
Yeah.
What?
Should have a live Broncos game outside, they can watch it, the Christmas.
We should, what, how much money do we have, no, I'm kidding. Can I circle back real fast on the IGA with county? You said you attended this morning and that there were a few questions that were brought up, even though it was passed, could you share with us those questions that were?
They were, just George asked some very clarification questions about um, what the service scope was and uh whether or not the sheriff's office had the resources to accommodate the free deputies and all that. And then they quizzed Peter for a few minutes about the law, legal language that was part of this and the term of the agreement. So it was more of the chair um, pulling information out of the staff that was there just for transparency purposes, I think. Um, but they were very, they were all very, very happy to be having this partnership with the with the town of Georgetown. They spoke nothing but great things about what they were looking forward to in our relationship, so I was very happy uh to be sitting there and they were talking nice.
It was very juicy to share, um, the new sheriff, um, out at a market this weekend. I saw him both days.
Yeah, it was a big cattle head.